Good evening and welcome to the August 28, 2025 Monthly Meeting of the Henrico County School Board. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Moved by Mr. Young, is there a second?
Second.
All the, or seconded by Ms. Cincella, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and to our visitors, good evening. We'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance as we always do, but because it's the very start of the school year, we do not have a student group, so I will be leading you in the pledge, which will be followed by a moment of silence. If you would please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would remain standing as you're able for a brief moment of silence, we'd also like to make sure during this moment of silence, we're thinking of all of our Henrico families and communities who have experienced loss at this time. That concludes our moment of silence. You may be seated.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. This evening, we are proud to recognize an outstanding employee that creates meaningful learning experiences for students of all abilities. Andrew Canada is a physical therapist in Henrico County Public Schools and this year's Christie Award recipient. The Exceptional Education Team had the pleasure of making a surprise visit to one of Andrew's schools to announce his selection. Please take a look.
Okay, so Andrew, you know, I'm Katie Smith. I'm the Director of Special Ed, and I'm here with my specialist team today. So we are super proud to let you know that you are the Christie Teacher of the Year for Henrico County. I asked some of my team to work with you, like what are the things that we want to make sure everybody knows about Andrew? They said, "We are incredibly grateful for Mr. Canada, who works as a physical therapist across 15 Henrico County schools. Exemplifies true dedication and compassion. His collaborative spirit shines through in every interaction as he partners seamlessly with staff, students, and families to ensure every child receives the support they need. Despite the demands, he approaches each day with an unwavering commitment and humble heart. His calm demeanor, warm smile, bring comfort to students and reassurance to the adults around him. He goes above and beyond, often behind the scenes, never seeking recognition, but always making a difference. Henrico is stronger because of Andrew's remarkable presence."
Andrew, will you please come forward to be recognized? As we saw in the video, Andrew is an incredible and beloved member of HBCUs family. Don't go yet, don't go yet. The Christie Award recognizes a member of the Exceptional Education Team whose contributions to HCPS have been exemplary in service of children and families. This award is named in honor of Christie Ann Heatwall, a former Henrico County student whose life characterized the passion and enthusiasm central to our mission of serving all students. Andrew was selected for this award from a distinguished group of school-level nominees. He has a heart for service and believes that all students deserve our very best every day. Please join me once again in congratulating Andrew Canada, the 2025 Christie Award recipient.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Our next recognition is for the Virginia Association for the Gifted's 2025 Parent of the Year. This award recognizes a parent who, through exceptional contributions to gifted education, has positively impacted our children, teachers, schools, and programs. Please join me in recognizing Lamar Huff. Lamar has served as a member and officer on the Henrico Gifted Advisory Committee since 2020. During this time, he has worked as an advocate for gifted and talented students across the division by donating his time and energy at events and GEAC meetings. His ability to work with other members across the county has been instrumental in the success of Henrico's gifted program. Please join me once again in congratulating Lamar Huff, the Virginia Association for the Gifted's 2025 Parent of the Year.
Apologies, I'm so excited about the heart of Henrico. I was hoping it was next, but that's okay. All right, next we have a recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Mr. Irving, could you provide that for us?
Whereas the Hispanic and Latino community stands as a diverse representation of an integral part of the innumerable historic and cultural contributions with local, national, and global impact, and whereas citizens are encouraged to participate in activities that recognize, appreciate, and celebrate the cultural and linguistic diversity and the significant contributions made by Hispanic and Latino Americans, and whereas Henrico County Public Schools and the Henrico community recognize and embrace our vibrant Hispanic and Latino community that continues to shape and strengthen our schools, our county, our country, and our world. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools recognizes September 15, 2025 through October 15, 2025 as National Hispanic Heritage Month and encourages observance in celebration to the attention of our citizens recognized by the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools this 28th day of August, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Irving, and for our next recognition, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. National Suicide Prevention Month, whereas youth suicide is a major public health concern, and whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death for young people ages 10 through 24 in Virginia and ages 10 through 14 in the U.S., and the third-leading cause of death among young people ages 15 to 24 in the U.S., and whereas awareness of warning signs, stress coping strategies, safety planning, and support network availability are essential to a multi-pronged approach to suicide prevention, and whereas schools serve as key settings for suicide prevention, and when school personnel, families, and communities take an active role in suicide prevention, lives can be saved. And whereas HCPS supports and implements comprehensive youth suicide prevention in partnership with others in our county and community to raise awareness, provide education through evidence-based suicide prevention programs, provide resources and trainings, and link individuals to effective treatment through established Henrico CARES pathways. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools recognizes September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention Month, recognized by the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools this 28th day of August, 2025. Madam Chair.
And thank you, Mr. Young.
All right, members of the board, the next item on the agenda is the Henrico Highlight, our opportunity to spotlight the programs, events, and innovative activities happening in our schools. This month, we are proud and excited to welcome Henrico's nearly 50,000 students back to school. The energy of the first week was electrifying and a sure sign that this is going to be an extraordinary year. Take a look.
Good morning, Verina Hogs. I am so excited to welcome you back to the 25-26 school year.
Welcome to Pemberton Elementary School. This is the first day of school. How many are excited to be here?
The best thing about being a principal is having kids in the school building every day. Love it.
Morning, everybody. How we doing?
Happy new school year.
Okay, so see, this is building seven. The building right behind it is building eight.
All right, so that's our main hall.
Good morning. Welcome back, welcome back. Good morning.
It is so good to see you guys. Happy first day of school.
We had some HVAC issues across the entire building that did end up shutting us down unfortunately. But we were so excited to be able to welcome some of our students onto the playground. We had a hot pickle party. Strawberry, tangerine, and grape.
Good morning. Are you ready for day two?
Yeah.
Me too. Have a great day, beauty.
Today is Tuesday, August 19. Today we celebrate National Potato Day.
Hello, good morning.
Hey, buddy. Have a great day.
Hello, daddy.
See that building all the way over there? Go that way. It's right there. Thomas up if we are feeling good and we are like in middle school.
Good morning. Day three of office school.
Good morning.
Morning.
Let's go. Breakfast and class.
Well, I had the chance to visit several schools last week and speak to many students and staff, and everyone was so very excited to be back together and jump into teaching and learning. As I said, this is going to be a great school year. Of course, engagement and success don't happen without careful planning and preparation. The teams from the Division of Learning and the Division of Professional Learning know this all too well. During summer break, they organized thousands of hours of staff development, assisted with job-specific training, and created all-new professional learning, an all-new professional learning conference for our 800 instructional assistants and special education technicians. Now that they've had just a moment to catch their breath, we are pleased to recognize them as this month's Heart of Henrico. Take a look.
Happy summer! From the bottom of my heart, thank you for your leadership, for your dedication, and for all that you do for Henrico County Public Schools.
Summers are our busiest time. It is a time of we're looking at changes for the following school year, but also giving staff an opportunity to have voice and choice in their own personalized learning, providing opportunities for them to grow.
And seeing consistently doing that, you set a tone on your butt.
One thing to go through, training, but taking it again really keeps your senses sharp, and I think that's something that you can't do enough of. You know, this is precious cargo.
Did y'all know that 80% of the dirt coming in your school comes in from the outside doors? These machines can help you do about 30, 35% of your tasks.
If you've been with Henrico County 20 years, please say enough. Journey to 2030 focuses on four key areas: academic achievement, learning environment, physical, social, emotional, and mental health.
We hope that you learn as much from each other this week as you do from the presenters.
I'm so excited for this opportunity. I've never taught before, but I've been a nurse for many, many years. So I'm bringing the industry into the classroom.
For me, you know, I spend a lot of my weekend hours at work. So it's important for me to be in a place where the morale is high and you feel like home.
I think it's pretty nice when you can feel the family atmosphere and it's not just something that's said, so it's been pretty exciting.
We create learning environments where every child is valued.
I feel like it gives you a perspective of exactly what it will be that you'll be dealing with, and I really think that it's good to have it yearly because you tend to entertain different behaviors, different activities that the kids will be going through. You get the benefit of learning different things from people who have had time in their positions to be able to share their experiences and different things that they've learned over the course of time that they've been working there. So I, for one, think that that's a great thing.
Professional learning is not one of them. It's truly our culture in Henrico, and that language can be found embedded throughout our strategic plan of Journey to 2030. The needs in our schools evolve, and with that, professional learning opportunities have to evolve and change to meet the needs of our staff.
How does that impact our students?
When it comes to meaningful, relevant professional development, no one is better than these educational professionals. Dr. Weston and team use the latest research, best practices, and their own expertise to design and deliver professional learning that can be used immediately to support employees and ultimately student success. Thanks to all of you for your incredible work and for being the heart of Henrico.
Thank you. Such a great group. Ms. Atkins, would you share our new mission statement?
Henrico County Public Schools, through engagement with our families and community, equips students with the knowledge and skills to be ready for life and a successful future.
Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is public forum. This is a time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance and will be given three minutes to address the school board. Speakers will be called in order in which they signed up and may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and school affiliation if applicable. After stating your name, please place your number that you were given in the cart near the podium. Speakers must present their remarks to the school board, not the audience, and may provide copies of their comments to the school board clerk if you would like. The use of obscenity or defamation is strictly prohibited and will be ruled out of order. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system displaying the elapsed time on the screen. I will also indicate when your time has expired. The school board is here to hear from you today. We will not be responding to speakers' concerns or questions during public forum. However, Henrico's staff member will follow up with speakers. Stakeholders have also had the opportunity to provide written comments through an online form in advance of the meeting. Those comments were shared with school board members prior to the meeting and are posted publicly in board docs. Equal consideration and attention are given to both written and in-person comments. We appreciate your attendance here this evening and for providing your input. We will start with speaker number one. Speaker number one. All right, we will move to speaker number two.
Hello, my name is Yvain. I am a fifth grader at Shady Grove Elementary. I want to talk about something very important, safety and equality. Right now, the intersection near our school is not safe because of this, kids like me and my friends who live on one side of the street are not allowed to walk or ride bikes to school independently. My kids who live on the other side are allowed. When we ask the school to make the intersection safe, we are told that nothing can be done. But that means some of us just have to suffer. Some of my friends are very upset about this. It makes it harder to focus on learning. Every day, we watch other kids ride their bikes while we are told we cannot. Nobody explained it to us. Nobody tries to help. It feels like we are invisible. What is that, if not segregation based on where we live? This Tuesday, I stood with my dad at this supervisor's meeting. A police executive told us that the school has even unofficially expanded the bike program. Originally, it was meant for only four streets behind the school, which makes sense because those families don't get a bus. But now, it feels like some privileged parents use their influence to push for expanded area to be included. County supervisors and police don't appear to be aware of this. Mr. Iring, our school is under your leadership. I wanted to be a teacher, but when I saw how students' voices are ignored, now I want to be a lawyer to defend children's rights. As a husband and a father, you go home after work to spend time with your family, but do you know how much time my parents spend writing letters asking for equal rights and safety instead of playing with me and my little brother? That is how a four-way stop sign finally got put in. We still need real action so that we can walk and bike safely like everyone else. Finally, I want to say this. My family moved to Virginia and chose Henrico Schools because my parents believed in public education. I even left a private school because my parents didn't want me to be in a bubble. They wanted me to learn equally and be a part of a bigger community. But right now, it doesn't feel equal. On social media, our school mostly shows fun events, but never things like Bike History Month, Autism Month, or Mental Health Month. Even my old private school did more projects for those. I'm not saying we don't learn about it at all. It feels shallow. Public schools should be about fairness, safety, and real equality for each children, every child, every day. I'm standing here because I believe kids like me and my friends deserve the same rights and the same safety as all our classmates. Please help us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Speaker number three.
That's a tough act to follow. Well done, young lady. Hello, my name is Donald Geib. I'm a teacher at Highland Springs High School, and I'm the treasurer of the Henrico Education Association. I came here tonight to say thank you for the additional funding and support you put forward to Highland Springs High School and the math department in particular. I have a short handout highlighting our success in math that I, if somebody could give it to you guys, you can look over it if you'd like. The last time I spoke with you was about the proximity program, and since then, that program has been removed from the school, and we have 100% math teachers. This past year, the Springs has improved in our geometry SOL pass rate from a low in 2023 of 48% to 59% in 23-24 and to 75% for 24-25. Without the extra funding and tutoring and teacher coaches, this would not have occurred, so I want to say thank you. We had 138 Algebra I students come to us last year not passing Algebra I. The year before, and 76% of them passed this year with hard work and from the Algebra I staff, the students themselves, and our coaches and tutoring support. 147 students came to us who had never passed any math SOL in middle school, and 62% of those passed their Algebra I SOL this year. This is really impressive for a gain in a single year. Of the 10 schools, which includes Henrico Virtual Academy, we brought our overall math pass rate ranking up for the SOL, ranking up from up to the fifth highest high school in the county. We used to be perennial basement dwellers. In geometry, we landed in fourth, being nudged out of third by Glenn Allen by one percentage point with a 75% pass rate compared to their 76% pass rate. I take pride in this result. Since last year, I was on the geometry team, and these results represent an exhaustive level of effort and hard work from both students and staff. Our students ranked sixth overall in Algebra I and eighth in Algebra II. Anyway, we just want to say thank you for the support you've given us and encourage you to keep giving this support. It may seem like the job is done, but it's not. Every year, we get a new brand, group of kids that need just as much support. With the extra support, we will, without the extra support, we will not be able to continue to bridge the skill gaps our kids have when they arrive to us in high school.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you can share your handout, oh, in the basket. in the basket, and we will receive it. Thank you so much. Next speaker is speaker number four.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Winifred Cooper. My family has lived in Henrico County for 25 years. My youngest, his name is Ryland Harvey. He is supposed to be a rising senior in the Engineering Specialty Center at Highland Springs. He is an AB student, even in this rigorous program. The head of the specialty center, his school counselors, his teachers, and even teachers we don't know have all loudly supported his return to the program. You all might recognize his name. He sent a very heartfelt email to each and every one of you. Only one of you responded to him, and I would like to personally thank you, Board Member Atkins. That really meant the world to him. This spring, our landlord of seven years sold the house that we were renting, and we had 60 days to move out. Despite searching, we could find no affordable housing in Henrico for our family of eight with this short deadline, and we purchased a home in Chesterfield. When I started this variance request process, I made a call after call to the variance office and to Dr. White, the school principal. Not one of those calls was returned. Our variance was denied without even one person speaking to me. It was denied based on a yes-or-no form that actually didn't even apply to our situation. These variance rules are not aimed at students in Ryland's situation. He was simply caught up in the crossfire. We are not trying to sneak into the Henrico County school system. We have been active members for 25 years. I have two Henrico School graduates already, and I have one that is one year away. The variance rules should not apply to children that worked hard, got accepted into one of the many specialty centers, and are in good standing. You can only enter these programs as freshmen, and they are designed as a four-year program preparing these students for college. This decision has disrupted his education at the worst possible moment, his final year. After 11 years of investment by Henrico Schools, his teachers, and his families, he has lost the continuity of this specialty program, the relationships that will help him transition successfully to college. I believe that each one of you are on the school board because you want to make a positive difference in children's lives. You've been elected to do right for the children. And every single person that I have spoken to about this, including board members, teachers, supervisors, even LeVar Stoney, everyone thinks this is the wrong decision. Everyone says it's not the right thing, yet no one has corrected it. And it takes one brave student person to stand up and say, "This isn't right, and we have to fix it." Even if you can't fix this for my child, if you cannot find a right way to let Ryland finish out his fourth year of this program with his friends and beloved teachers, let's at least not let this happen to another student. I propose that if a Henrico student has been accepted into a four-year program and is in good standing, they should be allowed to complete their program. This is not about one student. It's about whether Henrico County Public Schools stands by its commitment to seeing students through the finish line.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number five. Speaker number five. Speaker number six.
Good evening. My name is Romel Mills. I'm a 16-year-old at Henrico High School. First, I know I'm only on a three-minute timer, so is this fair with you guys? I'm just handing this out to the front. All right, I'm just cut straight to the chase. I'm gonna be real with you. Students are already out here hustling snacks in the hallways under the table. But the difference is, I'm giving them a right way to do it. Now, it's going to be structured, safe, educational, and it's not about selling chips. It's about teaching business skills, ownership skills, and building something that lasts. Now, I just started a club and did a club fair today, and I have 30 kids that want to start up their own LOC for their businesses and also build their credit before they turn 18, which I have already completed myself. Now, I will teach kids how to learn to invest in property and also invest their money in general. Now, the idea is that each school gets a student club that runs like a mini-business. They buy inventory, wholesale through me, sell retail, and keep the profits for their school. Now, I take a small percentage to cover the system and support, but that's it. But the bigger picture is, they could put this on their applications and also their resumes that they help out in their school system. Now, we can give these students more money, but if they don't know what to do with it, what matters? Like I usually say, 5K or 500K, it doesn't matter if you don't know what to do with it. So we will be teaching kids how to buy rental properties, tax liens, spot in ROI, return on investments, also finding market trends, and whatever. Also, we're going to teach them how to walk into bigger companies and stand in their rooms just like this and speak their lingo and negotiate prices and also their personal salary. Now, we're giving them connections, skills, and the confidence to run their own business or be some kind of leader who makes a change. Now, this isn't just an idea, though. Now, and you might think I'm doing this for the glory or the wealth, but it's not. I'm doing this for me, my mom, and my little brother, Iman. Now, I already have students lined up at Glen Allen, Hermatus, Highland Springs, Tucker, Petersburg, Elsieburg, Verona, Huguenot, Tom Jefferson, and every A center in Henrico High School. And I'm ready to go. If you don't believe me, I can connect you with them today. Now, they're hungry for this. Now, they're not just hungry for those snacks. They're hungry for the opportunity to run their own business. Now, with your support, this becomes more than kids sneaking snacks into school and selling them on the table. It becomes a district-wide entrepreneurship program. It stays safe, supervises professionals, and students get hands-on experience, and schools get credit for building leaders, not just graduates. Now, if you approve this, I'm not saying that you have to right now. We could talk about any questions or concerns, and I'll be willing to fix it. Now, students are ready. The system is ready. All we need is your green light is to turn hustlers into entrepreneurs and future leaders. I appreciate your time nonetheless.
Thank you so much. Speaker number seven.
My name is Marlene Sherlock, and we live in the Fairfield District. This is our 15th and final year in Henrico County Public Schools. To be honest, it can't finish soon enough. I wasn't even sure it'd be worth to continue to make the trek to your board meetings, but we keep telling our kids to see important things through. So it's time to model the behavior that we as parents expect. First, something positive, and then perhaps a wish list. Last night at dinner, I heard something from my child I thought I never would. "I love not having my phone." Let me repeat that. "I love not having my phone." Well, color me shocked. Even she admits to complaining most of the summer about the upcoming policy, but it didn't take long. On day two, she mentioned her rapidly changing attitude. And then, when a beloved administrator came strolling through the lunch areas and confiscated in-use phones some students had because of how their lunch falls, she and her friends were convinced that it was real. And one by one, many of them are just leaving their phones in their cars to avoid the hassle of checking it in and out of classroom phone vaults. Now that now that, excuse me, whether that particular practice meets the spirit of Senate Bill 738, well, that's up to the state. In the end, though, it was time to get serious about banning the phones. The kids threw away their shot at the compromise of a way for the day. And even now, there are still workarounds. Burner phones get put in the vaults, and smartwatches pass through notifications. But I urge you to keep the pressure on. So on to my wish list. I wish you'd talk more about what things cost, both in opportunity and hard dollars, especially for anything that doesn't put a teacher or assistant in a classroom. I wish you'd talk about those classroom sizes, particularly of core subjects, and overall school membership sooner rather than later. It might have made sense to report those at the end of September when we started after Labor Day, but at that point, we're more than halfway through the first marking period. I wish you'd find a way to keep the bathrooms open. I wish you'd make up your minds about weapons detectors and either utilize them consistently for every event, every time that door's opened, or dial back the theater and make the building more like a school than a prison. And I wish you'd find a way to get teachers more time to actually teach. There are more, and I suppose that's what I'll be back for. But finally, I wish every kid who has the capacity to learn, to read, and do math gets that chance. At the end of the day, that's what it's all about. If they can't read and they can't do math, they will not be ready for life or have a successful future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers this evening and to those who submitted written comments online. That concludes public forum. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Colleagues, this is a consent agenda for items 8.01 through 8.10. Are there any items that you would like to separate out for separate discussion or action?
Yes, Chair, I'd like to discuss 8.01 or at least ask a question or two.
Go for it.
Yeah, Mr. Whack would probably be the one to be able to address this. But looking through the report, it looks like we set our 2025 budget and then the year-to-date actuals of what we've received from the state. The state sales tax came in. Looks about $8 million more than expected, and state funds came in at a little over $27 million more than expected for a total of $37,992,055 in excess of what we expected from the state and federal revenues. And my question is, what's going to happen with those funds?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So this report is a snapshot in time before the county's financial statements are closed out for the year. But again, you're focusing on our revenue collections versus the budgeted amounts. And at this point, it appears, yeah, we're going to exceed the revenues from state and federal sources by, yeah, well over $30 million. So as the county general government financial team is closing out the annual statements, that will allow them to effectively, the general government can transfer over an equivalent amount, say $38 million less than what was budgeted. So that will ultimately add to the Henrico County's general fund balance and allow them to enhance the reserves.
So this would not be additional dollars that we would receive in excess of the budget that would just offset local appropriations?
So
Yeah, you're approximating, but yes.
Yeah, so if the financial statements indicate that there is an additional, say, $38 million, and that does not include any expenditure savings, those reserves could be established and then subsequently appropriated to our fiscal year 2026 budget. But at this point, I don't believe those reserves have been finalized.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other items you would like to separate out for discussion or action? Mr. Irving, are you okay taking action on 8.01 with the rest of the block? Or do you like to take action separately?
We can take it all together.
Okay, great. All right. So is there a motion for the consent agenda items 8.01 through 8.10 as a block?
I move that the school board accept, adopt, approve, and/or award items 8.01 through 8.10 on the consent agenda as presented.
Move my Mr. Irving. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of my Mr. Young. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, do you have any unfinished business you would like to address? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is new business. Colleagues, are there any new business items you would like to address?
I do have one.
Yes, Ms. Atkins.
I want to take a moment to honor a legend in Henrico Schools in our community, Mr. George Lancaster. I know him as Coach Lan. He would pull me in the halls and give me guidance as a student. And then, as of recently, he would quietly share his thoughts about my role as a school board member and always just providing inspiration and guidance. Coach Lancaster was a basketball coach, a mentor, a guide, a father figure to generations of students. He made history as one of the first black head coaches in Henrico County and led Highland Springs High School to 704 victories, including state championships in 2003 as well as 2007. And the blessing is that his legacy isn't just measured by wins. It's also measured by the lives that he touched, the many young people he inspired, and the community that he strengthened and loved. I also want to share that there is an opportunity to celebrate his incredible life. A community gathering will be on Saturday, September 27th, at Highland Springs High School in the gymnasium at 1:00 PM, and the doors will open at 11:30 AM. Also, for those unable to attend in person, a live stream will be available so everyone who was touched by Coach Lan's life can join in honoring him. Coach Lancaster taught us that true success, again, isn't only measured by the scoreboard, but by the heart and the character we bring to every moment. May we all live by the lesson, and may his legacy continue to inspire all of us. Chair Shay.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Colleagues, anything else? The last item on our agenda is the announcement of upcoming meetings. Our next meeting will be September 11th, 2025. It will be a 3:00 PM work session here in New Bridge Auditorium. The time of the meeting may be adjusted as needed. Have a great evening. This meeting is adjourned.